That's cool. Uh, good. But it's beautiful.
I haven't seen.
Last time, last time someone said that in twenty the next day. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, it's on, yeah. I didn't read.
It's four days. It's a two month thing.
Don't take that. Tracy, are you ready? Are we good? Okay.
Yeah.
Like to call this meeting over. Jelki's rise for the black slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, the trade group.
Here.
Terry Kamalati.
Here.
Brett Sondermeyer.
Here.
Carol Baker. Parker Sigwarren here, and Chair Mitchell is here. We're all here. Uh, so first up, review, adjust, approve, agenda and consent items. Thank you, Jen, for doing the minutes. Yeah, I missed the work session. That was very helpful for me.
I move to accept the agenda consent item as presented.
The seconded, any discussion? All for though, Tracy Bro.
Aye.
And Jerry Delmody.
Aye.
Brett Sondermeyer.
Aye.
Carol Baker. Uh, Chair Mitchell votes aye. Uh, reports, financial report, Hattie.
And you turned my topic.
I know.
So our Anita Jones looking good wants to send out an email to request everyone to close POs that they were not going to use this, and we're gonna start processing closing purchase orders. We can get better idea of what I need to come out, which will help our budget for this. And Terry sent me some questions this morning in regards to some spending. And the first one was, did the cost for AD secure, is this the five additional cameras installed that is discussed in the technology update? And it is not. That is a quarterly payment that happens September, December, and then. And the second question is the EGC costs, is this for the new, um, security cameras installed? And it is not. The EGC, we opened it at elementary school. We closed down beginning of the year, but the need is right, that we have needed that EGC removed back on for us today. So those were just supplies that was purchased without from. And then the yes, uh, or the S T L subscription, um, it's K through eight, and that is, um, K through five, one year annual subscription, and then six through eight annual subscription. And those were the questions I have from Terry. And Terry, do you have anything else? Is there any questions for me?
So Hattie, do you think our any fund balances gonna be, I don't know what we budgeted, close to what we budgeted?
Our any fund balance, our budget. This year looking into nine hundred and forty-four thousand, we can bring in an million. So we're watching it really close. We've stopped spending except for essential needs, Dawn, because overall purchase orders to make sure it's essential, not stocking up, you know, putting purchases in next year that needs to be paid for in next year funds. And so we're hoping that we can narrow that down a little bit, just for our budgeting process to be able to to maintain our systems as we.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
How do you know if you know this question or if it's a Jen question? When is, when do we start our budget meetings?
I have to look at the calendar.
Day. Yeah, I was, I didn't see it on the list, so I want to make sure we got it.
And that's the, the first week. Maybe fourteen, maybe fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you, thank you. Sorry.
Probably the third or the fourth, it has to be either the fifth or the eighth.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
It just kinda came into my thought patterns here. Are you guys, when you're with respects to consumables, supplies, into that sort of, uh, knowing that we don't necessarily wanna stock up, but are we going to be extent of forecasting, uh, with respects to price increases that subject the increase for next year? So that we may be able to offset, uh, spending more later instead of spending it now?
I think what supplies, any supplies that I can say that might fall into that would be like our electronics and things like that.
How about janitorial and maintenance and, um, uh, paper, that kind of stuff?
Paper, they're, they're purchasing as needed if it's to get them through the rest of the school year. I have no idea what prices are gonna be like. For next year, there's any indication that I'm sure that prices are gonna go up, they always do. I don't have any indication as to what I need.
I don't know that it's been a practice pattern in the past, but under the, you know, current circumstances financially speaking, uh, I don't know that it's wanted to do so, but it's just something to think about.
Good question. You have other questions for me? Thank you so much.
Uh, superintendent update. Alright, so a little bit of a shorter report, um, this month because I have a long presentation to do a little bit later. Um, first and foremost, wanted to just give you an update, uh, with regard to ODE. You know, we've been talking about, um, things that have happened since the changeover in administration in January, about the dear college letter that came out in February. On April third, the US Department of Education sent the letter out to all state, excuse me, education agencies, including, um, ODE. And that letter was requiring them to certify within ten days of receipt of that letter that the state and all of the school districts were in compliance with anti-discrimination rules, um, that were set up by Title Six and Supreme Court decision, uh, students versus Harvard. Um, they had talked about they being ODE, had talked about that it's possible that some school districts may have received, uh, may receive that letter as well. Um, at this point in time, I'm not aware of any other, uh, school districts in the state of Oregon that have been asked to certify, um, whether or not we were in compliance with anti-discrimination rules. Um, so just a little bit of background, in the case that I referenced in my report, um, the students versus Harvard, um, Supreme Court decided that Harvard's race conscious admissions programs violated the equal protection clause of fourteen amendment of Title Six of Civil Rights Act. Um, and the reason that state education agencies and possibly school districts are being asked to certify compliant is because we all receive federal funds. And by accepting federal funds, we agree to abide by federal anti-discrimination requirements. Um, we've always been required, um, as school district to meet any and all anti-discrimination laws. Um, and what we've been told is that the letter that was sent by the US Department of Education on April third does not change that. Uh, federal law prohibits discrimination against many protected classes. Um, and under the Federal Elementary and Secondary Education Act, um, ODE already submitted their certification, uh, that they, uh, that they were following, um, they were in compliance with anti-discrimination rules. Um, what I will share with you is that the Oregon Department of Education on Friday did send a letter, um, to the US Department of Education, and they refused to certify. And they're following along other school districts or other states that have done the same thing. They said, we certified back in twenty twenty-three under the Elementary Secondary Education Act that we were following the rules, um, that we were in compliance with the discrimination, anti-discrimination rules of the opposite civil rights, the Title Six, and we're not gonna recertify again. I have no idea what that means. Um, we're just gonna have to wait and see. So just wanted to give you an update as far as, you know, what has transpired just in the past several days. Um, again, Jefferson and, and there aren't any districts in the state that I'm aware of that have been asked, um, to certify. And we've been told that if we do receive such a letter, that we are to sit in touch with ODE as well as our legal counsel. So, uh, if you do receive such a letter, that is what I will be doing. Uh, I do wanna let you know that as far as federal funds are concerned, um, we get, um, through the state of Oregon, so state of Oregon gets federal funding, um, but with our title programs, those are all federal title programs, we get over three hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four. So, just so you, you are aware. Um, and then lastly, in my report, um, unfortunately, we continue to see our enrollment numbers continue to decline. We're down at the high school. Um, we've remained pretty steady at the elementary, um, and we're pretty steady at the middle school, how we have dropped a few kids at the middle school. We've started the budgeting process for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, as Hattie said, we've already notified staff, um, that spending for the remainder of the school year will be for essential items only so that we can save as much money now, um, save as much money as possible between now and the end of the school year. As we are budgeting, uh, we are looking at enrollment numbers and staffing. It is possible that we may have to look at reducing staff for the upcoming school year. And I'm not talking a ton of staff, I'm talking to you. Um, we'll do our best to protect our programs and our staff. Um, at the end of the day, we do have to provide you with a battle budget. So those are all things that we have to do. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Enrollment page was a little blurry, at least on my part now. Is it six eighty-eight, you know, off the top of your head? Couldn't quite read it, even with my glasses on.
Yes, it's eighty-eight.
Hasn't been that low.
Hasn't been that low in many, many years.
Thank you.
It's far back, it's where she goes, I think.
Hey, Dawn, what are we gonna use for ADM on our budget?
It's sixty-five. But it's better over two years.
Right.
So this year, because we do have quite a few seniors graduating, we have quality less of the kindergarten group coming in, graduating, not thirty-six, that's half around what we proceed. And so it's better over two years. Right now, our ADM is based on more than six, seven, sixty-five students. So they'll use the ADM don't from this year.
Okay, thank you. I've got a tough question. It's been on my mind for a little while. And seeing that our enrollment is down, it's better to ask the question now, knowing that the question cannot be answered tonight. At what point are we completely in the red and have to make major, major, major decisions as far as student attendance, student enrollment? That's a question for next month. I'm not asking for it to be tonight, because I don't think you guys would even have that answer. But the situation. Situation, the, the question needs to be asked.
Right. I mean, you know that eighty-five percent of our funds are still on staff. So the only place to make a huge dent in your budget is by reducing staff. And so that's why it is extremely important, whenever you're doing your budget, to look at your enrollment numbers, to look at your class sizes. The difficulty we run up against is especially at the primary level where you've got, you know, a seven period a day, and you've gotta fill six of those periods with, with classes. Do you have enough electives? Do you have enough places to put all of your students? It's easier at the elementary level because you say, oh, if you only got, you know, thirty-two students for one grade level, hey, well, you don't. It's not economically feasible to have two teachers and thirty-two students. Whenever you're in a budget crisis, is it nice? Yeah. But do you end up, you know, thirty-two kids and instructional system? Those are all things that, that you're going to have to look at. So I'm kind of hoping, and I don't know, um, the sixty-six thousands that are supposed to be coming into Jefferson, I don't know when that's slated to begin, um, that we have some kids from the housing development.
You know, when they built those apartments, we were kinda hoping that we'd get, uh, we'd gain children, and I really haven't seen, seen if in amount, or if we have gained them, maybe we haven't lost as many, uh, you know? Yeah.
Apartments don't usually bring in kids just because they're one, maybe two bedroom. You can't really count on a whole lot of kids coming in from an apartment complex, but housing development would be a little bit different. So I'm hoping. Let's see, that could be a few years. We probably wouldn't be in, we would still have to make cuts, but not as deep, um, if we didn't have the issue of our first, because remember, that's possible to strip, that's four hundred thousand dollars. And then, um, with us losing, um, students between graduation and not getting the same number of kids coming into kindergarten, you're losing about another thirty kids, it's another three hundred thousand dollars. And then we're just also looking at the increase in the cost. Um, transportation is gonna be about a hundred thousand dollar increase. So, but I'm working to try and get that lower. So we'll, we'll see what happens.
Well, your report's always clear cut, is ever done, which I appreciate. My, probably my biggest concern, just from my own experiences, um, how do I phrase it? If we have to reduce staff, when will you let them know as soon as possible? Because if these people are going to be cut, these people have families that they need to feed, they need to find jobs as soon as possible. And I would like to let them know, you know, even if anything, as a month or two month advance, that you need to start looking for a job now.
It'll be soon. I can't give an exact date, but it'll be, we'll give them enough of this, that if we have to cut, then.
Do you have an idea how many staff members we have to cut?
Um, I'm looking at probably two to three.
For all districts.
Questions for Dawn?
Well, I know that was a hard question. I don't know how you're gonna come up with the response, but the only way I can equate it in my head right now is based upon ADM, eh, eh, ADM.
And the other piece, you know, uh, Parker, I appreciate your question about when they, who we, we need to notify staff. All of the, the certified staff received their intent, um, to hire, um, in March, and they had until April fifth to submit back to us whether they were gonna be returning or not. And so part of our decision is gonna be based on if we have staff that are not returning, do we need to fill those positions? So that's, that's the other piece. There's a lot, a lot of pieces to the puzzle that have to fall into place.
Retirement. You always want the positions first before you go to the other ones.
Good, good question.
Is it possible that I'm terribly inexperienced in this because of my age, but that we can move, if we were to cut some of our staff, or if they were to not return, could we move some of the existing staff and promote them or give them a different position if they were flexible enough in their job?
Depends on licensing. That's the other piece that we have to take into consideration. You wouldn't be able to necessarily move an elementary teacher to teach a high school class because they have to be licensed to teach in a specific content area. Um, same with moving a, you know, a high school math teacher down to teach kindergarten. They might be able to do that because they're, you know, they're a teacher, they have the skills. I don't know a lot of high school teachers that would wanna teach kindergarten and vice versa. Um, so those are all things that we take into consideration. I also have to think about the language that's in our collective bargaining agreements as far as, um, how we notify staff, and there's also a statute on, um, layoff of staff members. So have to make sure that we're following the foreign statutes, the collective bargaining agreements, um, and making adjustments where we can.
Other than that, it's pretty easy.
Pretty easy, yeah.
I, I don't envy you, and, and those are, uh, tough decisions that are, knowing you, that probably keep you awake at night.
Yeah. Rap report. Do you know how many students, I guess kindergartners, that we need to enroll next year to stay within the funds that we receive?
Well, if we were gonna stay even, we'd need to enroll the same number of kids that were exiting graduation, which is about seventy students. And we've only been enrolling between forty and fifty. So we don't know exactly how many kindergartners we're gonna get. We usually don't know until that first day of school, which makes things really hard. You know, we've got registration open now, the elementary school, um, can do like a, kindergarten roundup, trying, trying to get parents to come in that may have kindergartners that will start. We know of some kindergartners because they are, they're already receiving services from the line of ESD because they're on, like, it's an IEP, um, for preschoolers. So we already are aware of eleven or twelve that are missing to us. Hard to, it's hard to predict for kindergarten, how many kids you're gonna get. We just have to look historically at what we have been picking up in the past. Any other questions?
Director update, Kyle.
Hey, uh, I'm Kyle D. Martino, this is the first time presenting to you guys as tech director. Uh, had a lot happen over the last six months. I'm gonna kinda roll through it. If you guys have any questions, just stop me in my place. Uh, starting off, earlier this year, Chris Shaw had upgraded all of our Windows equipment, all of our operating systems up to Windows eleven. Um, Windows ten is reaching its end of life, meaning mo, no more updates, no more security updates from Windows on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. So we're in accordance with that already. We have run into the issue of our equipment not really being able to hold up against Windows eleven. We have been purchasing, uh, laptops at eight gigabytes of memory, eight gigabytes of RAM. It's just not cutting it for Windows eleven. We need to bump that up minimum to twelve gigabytes, possibly to sixteen if we can afford it. We're watching our staff computers drop like flies right now, uh, due to battery issues, due to this RAM, so they're not able to operate these programs that they used to be able to. And they're overheating components internally, making it difficult for us to repair them in-house. So we need to purchase more equipment that can keep up with it. Um, that brings us to the next section is computer and device pricing. I'm sure if you guys have been reading the news, you've seen the tariffs. Immediately, prices of computers jumped up about twenty-five percent over the last week. It's probably gone up another twenty-five. I'm working with our partners at SHI right now to try to get in-stock equipment that is not tariff touched. We need to move fast on it. Other people are thinking the exact same thing. I'm not sure if we can or not, but I do know at a minimum, Chris Shaw was buying ten laptops a year to kinda keep up and swap them in. We lost out on twelve of them the day of the update and have lost even more since then. We're behind. I'll be in touch with you guys. I'll be in touch with everybody as we move through the process. Um, no word yet from SHI, talked to them about last week, so we're still early in that process.
So I have a question about the, and I'm not a computer guy.
Absolutely.
But if you were donated computers that had the hard drives wiped on it, would that, and I don't know about how many gigs or how much RAM they have or anything like that, but would that be any value to you whatsoever?
Yes, yeah, we can find something, we can work with donated equipment for sure.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to give you a number of an IT guy, and you guys can talk IT.
Yeah.
Stuff.
That's another thing I've been looking at too. I don't have any direct answers for you, but I did get in touch with the National Guard guys. I know that, uh, branches of the military sometimes will donate to schools. A buddy of mine who did that, he was a network engineer for the Air Force. So I'm reaching out and trying to get creative too. Uh, so if you guys have anybody that you might know of, I'll take numbers.
Garmin.
Hmm?
Garmin.
Yes, Garmin is a bit competitive. Okay, uh, phone system refresh. So our current phone system is old. It's a Mitel fifty-three twenty E IP desk phone. We operate it all in-house. It's not cloud operable. Um, we just have big racks that manage the system. It's going end of life as well. Actually, the phones have reached end of life November first, twenty twenty-four, so we will no longer be getting additional support for these phones. We cannot get new equipment if one of these phones breaks or if our actual system itself goes down, we're gonna have to fix that in-house. So we are trying to get ahead of it, and we're trying to refresh the entire phone system. Unfortunately, we, we're not gonna go with Mitel again. We might have been able to save on cost of equipment, but Mitel filed for bankruptcy earlier this year. So we're trying to look for another brand. It's a bit of an uphill battle. A lot of the modern phone brands right now, uh, we're talking Sangoma, Zoom, uh, Cisco, we have Fortinet in here. Most of them no longer offer this hardware that we operate and know and we can keep in-house and maintain ourselves. They're doing cloud-based or hybrid systems, which all in all means we don't have access to fix a problem if it goes down. We have to wait for their team of engineers. It's more expensive, and we're paying for license fees per phone rather than paying for the system itself and maintaining it. So I'm working specifically, Fortinet has already come forward and been able to get us an in-house price line without hybrid or, uh, cloud-based systems. We do have that, that loose quote in here, and I'll talk a little bit more on that pricing a little bit later, uh, and why it looks so much bigger than what we're actually expecting. But that's one thing to keep in mind is that this is far and few between this, this quote right here is that in-house product. This is not that hybrid or that cloud. If something falls through with Fortinet and we need to go with Cisco or Sangoma, well, we'll be looking at a price increase and a yearly charge for those licenses. A lot of them are trying to tack on things that we don't need. They're akin to Google Meets or Microsoft Teams. They have all these fancy chat functions. We just need a desk phone. We have Google Workspace, we're good on that front. So it's just talking with the right people and getting the right equipment. Okay, so we can go over the price points really quick. Um, we'll find that total on the second page of this. The first four items, um, this is the hardware that we'll need to be able to maintain it. You can think of it kind of like the phone server system, um, as well as that first item right there is that premium support. So what we just lost out on with Mitel this year, we're gonna get three years of support with Fortinet if we run into anything that might require an engineer, something that's a little bit above what we can provide here in-house. The next three, so two, three, and four, uh, these are your actual pieces of hardware. Um, you'll see everything has quantity of two. We did this quote based on a best practice guide for enterprises of this side, this size. That includes redundancy, something that I don't think we really need. It's doubling our cost of hardware just to have two systems in case one goes down. We have some other forms of redundancy in place with our PA systems, with Google Meets, with Teams. If a phone goes down for a couple hours, I don't think it's gonna warrant the cost to double up on the entire hardware. Um, so that'll bring our costs down significantly. You'll see item five and seven, these are the actual desk phones. They were split up because we wanted to look at what would it, what it would look like to have, um, more professional phones in environments. So instead of like a teacher's desk, if you have a conference room, that might be a bit more of a robust phone. It's not something we really need. So we'll be sticking with those two eight zero B entry level IP phones just across the board. They'll get it done for everybody. But we will go up from ninety to about a hundred and seventy phones across the district. That's how many active lines we have plus ten percent. That way, if we run into any issues, a phone breaks, we're able to swap it out day of. All right, item six, I skipped over that. That's my bad. That's another piece of hardware. It needs to go in each of our buildings. So that'd be the DO, the three schools and this building we're in right now. That's how we bridge the IP, the internet to the phones between the building. Next page over, we see that total is thirty-one thousand and in my document, it is actually going to be twenty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars if we take off, take off the redundancy. That's to do a total phone refresh. It'll be handled in-house, so I'll be installing it. I'll have the engineers help me remotely when it comes to configuring the phones. But we should be able to accomplish something like that over the summer and maybe a week. Any questions on the phones?
Started getting an updated quote without the redundancy built in?
Yes. We should hear about this week. Yeah, we're actually working through SHI on this too. They're the ones giving us all these providers. So we're also still waiting on a quote from Sangoma, Cisco and Zoom. So we'll have more quotes as well. We'll see, yeah.
Kyle, was this budgeted?
Night. So that's the thing is I want to get out there and I want to get creative with some funds. It's something I think we can handle. Just this last year, we're actually going to talk about it here in a second. We put in a brand of VA PA system, the Valcom PA system. We also had some other upgrades over the last year. It's something I think we can make work. I'll have to let you know.
President Terry, you guys might need to help me with this question. We spent monies, if I remember correctly, for our phone system a few years ago. You guys recall that?
No. PA.
He said the PA recently. There was a point in time where we had to do something with the phones. It's ringing heavily in my ear.
Do you remember that, Hattie?
And he got in and he spent a hundred and fifty, forty-nine thousand dollars and we gave him a hundred and twenty back for his spend, so he got up fifteen thousand. But I don't think we've updated the performance since I've been here since two thousand and eighteen.
You're gonna talk TA systems still though, right?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
On the phones before we do move on, what's going to happen if we don't? When's it going to happen?
If we don't, we're at risk. I mean, one day we might just have a component go out on us and we're either going to have to fix that in-house or be down phones. I can't say that I necessarily have the experience to go ahead and fix this hardware. Mitel's old. It's not something I've worked with before. So if some component, especially on our controller system or server for the phones, if that goes out, I'm going to have to go ahead and find a way to reconfigure that and those might be null and void by the time I get there. On top of that, it's a front-facing IP phone, means these things connect to the internet. So they're not receiving updates anymore. They are a security risk. What's that? For the phones?
Yeah.
Yes.
So two quick questions. One, is there any way to source any of the materials that we need secondhand? And two, do you have an estimate on what we would, excuse me, what we would need to pay if we had the just absolute bare minimum films, like maybe even less than what would be comfortable, but it is just useful?
Yeah, so if we're going to need to save on costs, we need to reduce the number of lines. That's going to be the most direct way to bring it down. It's a hundred and the exact number is hundred and fifty-four active lines in the district and there are phones that are probably not being used as often as they could, especially those area phones. So if they're in a conference room or something. We do run into the issue though, is one of the selling points on these phones is a programmable red button. You can call it what you want, but it's a panic button. We can tell that phone where to go. So if we wanted to go straight out to nine one one, it can. If we want to have it go to our front offices, it can. That's a big selling point, something I'm interested in for securities purposes. So we would still probably want phones, at least in most of our rooms. But yes, if we do need to save price on this, the only real direct way will be to reduce those lines.
Because these are basically bare-bones phones that you've got to call on.
This is the lowest of the low that we can get. This is one of the few companies that is providing non-subscription based models.
Right.
This is cheap.
Yeah.
I guess they just have a little problem with a hundred and fifty phones and we only have a hundred employees.
We have rooms, we have, that's interesting. So I'll look into it deeper. I'll get you an accurate number. So if we only have that many employees, maybe.
Maybe a little bit more.
No, we'll have things like conference rooms and stuff that we'll still need to fill up too. I'm sure that's another twenty.
Okay. Employees and you have all the offices.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, but we can save, you know, several thousand dollars if someone just walks through another room. I have from that.
That's true, but I would think the main concern is safety, you know, if I have someone dangerous right outside, I'm not just going to walk outside and go to the closest building. I'm going to want to hit the thing that's closest to me so that way everyone in the district is safe.
Yeah, each one of those phones are ninety bucks. So we can definitely get a much more accurate number and see how much we can save. We'll be looking at a couple hundred dollars if we reduce down, but everything else.
Yeah.
Might be a little redundant, but can you, is there the option for for the panic button to just literally get just a device that is just a hand button and not a phone? Would that help the costs at all?
I guess the selling point on it is that it comes with a phone. It's something that we already need. If we were to go out for another device, that'd just be another cost with the phone. Phone's already coming with it.
I'm telling you, we have those at the hospital and they're not any cheaper.
Okay, the Valcom PA system. Earlier this year, back in November, Certified Systems came out and installed that new PA system in the high school. It installed pretty quick. It is robust. It works. We've had a little bit of a learning curve with it and when it comes to scheduling, just because it's a different device, both. I think we're starting to get the hang of it. It's something that I definitely would like to see in the other two schools quickly if we can. The Bogan PA systems that we still have in the elementary and the middle school are becoming unreliable. They're difficult to get manufacturer support. In fact, as far as I'm aware, we haven't gotten manufacturer support when there is issues. We had the elementary school's PA system go down for about a week earlier this year back in, I want to say December. And I had to go in and basically become technician certified on the system to be able to configure it myself. That's what the delay was. I had to go get spun up. I had to use their online education tools and learn how to work with the system on a deeper level than we're supposed to as customers. We need to get rid of those systems. We need to put in Valcom systems when we can. Those Valcom systems, when I was looking through the price points, what Chris went through is he used E-rate money. It costs about fifty thousand, I want to say. Right. So if we were to go out for any more of these Valcoms, that's what we're looking to pay out of pocket is that fifty thousand. If we can keep the same.
Both schools or?
Per school. They're pricey. And that is, that's equipment and installation. It's a big installation job. I was watching Certified Systems do it this year and it's, it's a big process to do it.
I would assume basically you're just gutting the whole building, maybe new things.
They were able to reuse some equipment. So the speakers and whatnot were able to kind of plug right back into, but it's a lot of electrical wiring. It's a lot of running ethernet and getting all throughout the building and rafters. So maybe we'd save on cost on installation, just considering that the elementary school is significantly smaller than the high school, but you're also talking an older building. So you might just flip one coin for the other. At this point, I have not actually gone out for a quote for the Valcom PA system. We're really shooting for the phones first.
Do they have annual licensing fee for our system or for location?
It's per system.
It's per system.
Yeah, so that's the nice thing about the Valcom system is we don't pay a licensing fee. We just use Certified Systems and we pay by the hour if they need to come fix something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kyle, I have a question about that.
Yeah.
You know, obviously the elementary schools are but the middle school is new. It's only a couple of years old. How old is it? Four years? Four years, five years old?
It's four years.
Four years old. So you were saying we have a problem with the intercom system at the middle school too?
It's just the same device, the Bogan PA system. It's old. So I imagine with the new middle school, we didn't go out and purchase a new PA system. We probably just wired the old one in.
Yeah, there were some things that were
Yeah, see, I don't know.
Were taken from the old middle school and brought over. I don't know if that was one of them.
Yeah.
But, you know, we did try to clean what we could to help defer costs. But I, it's been so long, I couldn't even remember. It was quite a bit.
I will say we've had less problems with the middle school's PA system, but I can't tell you it is a Bogan. It's the same model we have in the elementary school. I had to do some work on it, so. I'm unsure as to why, but it is.
Yeah, it kind of surprised me. I didn't know that.
Okay. Phishing and scam emails. All across the world, everyone's facing an uptick of scammers, phishing, just general malicious intent online. A lot of this stems from the fact that it's significantly easier for scammers to try and get into our inboxes. What they're doing these days is training up these AI models, these large language models, and these models are being released into the wild to basically scam twenty-four seven and they're doing it professionally without grammatical errors and they are pretending to be people that you know. We are getting people in the district. Maybe you've seen something similar, but they will pretend to be staff members with changes in the email by maybe a letter. They're getting smart. So we need to try to stay ahead of the game and keep up on any form of education that we can provide our staff members. Whether that's a day in-house where we all talk about it or maybe a monthly newsletter. However, we want to try to go about it. We just need to make sure we're staying up to date on our security policies. I'm sure there is a number of staff members who are probably unaware or unsure of how to report a phishing email or even how to detect one of these more modern phishing emails. So I'd like to get out of it and just try to see where we're at.
Do you have the ability? One thing that's been really effective with my work is the IT department sends out tests, phishing emails. And if you, obviously if you reply or click on the link or whatever, then you got to watch a video and it can lead up to you losing your email, which for me would be losing my job.
Yeah.
So do you have the ability after the training to send out those test phishing emails?
We do. I would say we'd probably have to develop maybe a little bit of policy before we go out there and and play the entrapment game, but it's definitely something that
That's a
I'm all for it.
Words. I was just hoping, I was thinking that instead of any form of punishment, the list of names of people of reply will be posted during the board meetings.
All right.
You good with that?
Yeah. No, whatever it is, I just, I'm concerned and I'm basically put some effort into this. So I can't tell you currently if this is a kind of a scary message from me, I will say that we're doing a good job. We meet all PACE requirements. We have a weekly vulnerability scan accomplished by Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency that's CISA. That's a governmental agency. So we actually are putting in for our application to be involved with that next year as well. We are a part of a cybersecurity pilot program through USAC and we leverage a litany of tools to make sure that we are safe on all ends. So there's a lot of things you have to do wrong before you really give someone information they're not supposed to have. We're lucky about that, but there's always a chance. There's always a possibility. So some things that I'd like to accomplish in terms of security. I have been looking at standardizing mobile phone authentication for our staff members. It's a bit more difficult for our students to find an authentication service, but at least for our staff members, we can pick one stalwart app. So we're all the same across the board. So there's a few ways that some people may be able to get away from multi-factor, especially if they just want to press skip every time they log in. They'll just get around it for a little while. So I kind of want to isolate that and make it more of a priority for the district to make sure everybody's got some form of multi-factor, whether it's your phone. Or I've got listed in here, smart card authentication. I've used that previously in my line of work. You run into the issue of maybe a staff member loses their card somewhere and they're out the computer for the day, but the only way you can reach district information is with a hard piece of equipment.
I want to tell you right now, if I was a staff member, I would lose that thing within a week.
It happens.
Only once or twice and then you'd like, well, you'd think so, but it don't happen.
But we all keep a, a lot of us keep building cards. It gets us in the building every day. So we should already kind of be on the right mindset for it. Smart cards is what I'd like to do. I've seen them work very well. We talked about it a little bit. I do want to improve our phishing and scam handling just across the district, get some more information to staff members and maybe do less of a yearly training and more of like a quarterly training. It can be digital. It doesn't need to be in-house, but I'd like to see us keeping up to date and learning. I mean, this stuff is evolving fast now. Some other steps that I'm taking right now is I'm going to meet with some industry experts and kind of figure out what more robust enterprises are doing these days. I mean, of course, they keep that kind of close to the chest because they don't want to broadcast what they're doing. But I've got some good industry partners that I can get with and we can try to follow suit. Another thing we might be able to do is maybe get some donated equipment from those. If they're upgrading their systems, maybe we can go and pull their all old smart card system. We'll see. Any questions on digital security?
Kyle, what's the cost of smart cards?
Congratulations, great question. I haven't even gone out to look at them yet, what it would look like to upgrade our enterprise here. I can't imagine it's going to be incredibly expensive, but what we're really looking at is maintaining and getting everybody on board with the smart card. That might take a little bit of time. I do believe if we were to get smart card readers, they have laptops that you can plug a smart card into directly. I don't think that's something we'd need to go out for. There's USB direct to smart card reader. You can pick them up for twenty bucks. So if we were to get one for every staff member, couple brand, we'd be rolling.
So yeah, at my work, I work at the state hospital and we use UBI keys. I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's just you plug it into your computer and then it reads your fingerprint.
Yep.
And you can log in anywhere.
Yeah, so UBI keys are where, especially the DOD is moving towards. So a lot of other governmental agencies are moving to UBI keys. That's why I think maybe we can get some smart cards donated. They're just another form of of smart device. They're a little less robust.
Right, and you don't have to have a little reader or anything. It just plugs right into your USB port.
So if that's an option and something that's affordable, definitely take a look at it. Okay. The LED sign, we're able to upload pictures. We're able to upload and schedule to it now. It has to be done manually. We have a couple of devices, our network bridges that allow us to use our web-based portal to change things. They're not talking to each other, so we're not getting it to connect to the internet, but that's to say I got a homegrown tool from Signs Plus, so I'm able to kind of do what they are able to and change it manually. I just have to go stand out by the sign to do it. So but it works now.
Well, it's nice and sweet. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions about the song?
Yeah.
All right. Camera upgrades. We just put in some new cameras into the high school. We had identified some blind spots that were needing to be filled. Those cameras now cover the office door, the southeast gym doors, the freshman hall, the west side of the parking lot and the back of the commons and stage area. The only adjustment that needs to be made after installation is the west side of the parking lot camera. It needs to be rotated a little bit more to the left. But otherwise it was a clean install and it's looking good. We have already identified a few blind spots at the elementary school that they would like to cover as well, one of which being there is no real camera looking on the outside of the front doors. So we found that out a few weeks ago. There's also no camera in the cafeteria and we're missing a camera in the third grade hall. So we're probably looking at a very similar cost and a similar amount of cameras when we go out for that. The good news is, is it was under nine thousand to put those five cameras in the high school. It'll probably be about the same. So for a touch-up in brand-new equipment, having them come out there and install it. It's not bad. I haven't taken the time yet to go and identify JMS blind spots, but that will be coming after the elementary school to see if we even need them. I haven't taken the time yet to go and identify J M S blind spots, but that will be coming after the elementary school to see if we even need them. All right, that's the tech update. I know it was a little long-winded and not very structured. Is there any last-minute questions?
I know I I believe this is your first year here.
Yes.
For your report, this was honestly really clear, really well done.
Thanks.
Kyle, I got a question on the window, going to window eleven upgrade. You know the cost for that?
Cost for just getting new equipment. Well, prior to tariffs, we were looking at about twelve hundred dollars per bottom-of-the-barrel device for a twelve gigabyte.
Per computer.
Per computer.
What's costing twelve thousand dollars?
Twelve hundred.
Oh, twelve hundred. That was way more cents.
And that'll be for staff laptops. Student Chromebooks usually come out to be a little bit cheaper, but we have enough Chromebooks right now to repair. We're doing okay on those, and those operate on something called Google O S, so they're not exactly getting hit like the staff computers are.
And obviously, our computers, we don't know what the cost is because of the tariffs. We don't know what the cost of computers.
The conversation for replacing these computers started about three weeks ago. Two weeks ago is when we got word of tariffs, and then a week later tariffs went up in China.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Have you presented before in front of the board or anybody? Do you have experience doing this?
It's been a long time.
You did very well. Really appreciate this, and I agree with Parker. Your report was, I thought it was really good. Easy to read.
Yeah, I wanted to answer a previous question, and something came up that at least a little bit of light on. So sixty-six units, actually behind my house. Now, at this point, they are battling federal regulations on waterways. So they've had at least two hearings that I know of, since I'm so close, I get notifications. And the other concept that I, that hasn't been brought up yet, I've been here for nineteen years, and they always cut the hay July fourth. And so I'm doubting that they would want to put, start working construction on that field till they get their hay off. So at least till that time, they probably won't have anything going on in that field, so they can get that, get the money from that, sales that hay, whatever else. So that's a part that I know of. So, any other questions about that?
So we're thinking a couple of years in, Bob.
Probably.
This is the property that's out at the end of Hazel, correct?
Yes. In Greenwood, in Greenwood, out. Backside of Seventh.
No, there's definitely
Yeah.
Potential strong benefit there. Very hopeful.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from the audience? Um, new business. We have seven There's some good news.
So I'll go ahead and read this. Resolution number twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, twenty-five dot oh four dot zero zero one, Teacher Appreciation Week. Teacher Appreciation Week is observed annually during the second week of May. In twenty twenty-five, this is the week of May fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas teachers would, or teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely different backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Jefferson School District fourteen J Board of Directors proclaims May fifth through ninth, twenty twenty-five, to be Teacher Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Jefferson School District fourteen J Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in, to join with in personally expressing expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Adopted this fourteenth day of April, twenty twenty.
I move to accept resolution number twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Parentheses twenty-five point zero four point zero zero one, closed parentheses, proclaim Teacher Appreciation Week the week of May fifth through the ninth of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. Trace the row.
Aye.
Can we come, Lottie?
Aye.
Fred's over.
Aye.
Carol, agree. I, Mr. Mitchell votes aye. Next up, Superintendent Morefield contracts. I'm going to hand this over to Fred and Terry.
So Dawn's new contract is in the packet there with all the changes highlighted, and I'd like to point out before we dive into it that Perry and I have handled this for the last four years, right? And I very much appreciate that we're able to sit down at the table and, so how long were we in there for?
Well, it was an hour. It was a half-hour bargaining and a half-hour B S.
Yeah. Yeah. And it does make me, Dawn's a very good negotiator. Terry's mediocre. No, but we're, it's just nice because it's, the difference now is that we just sit down and we talk back and forth and reason things out. There's nobody else in the room but us, and so hopefully the, all the rest of the negotiations go just as smoothly. So we'll just dive right into the contract, and I, I was just, everybody has it, so I was just going to cover the changes. Well, the highlighted portion, I just want to be very transparent, and so make sure everybody knows that the term of the contract shall become effective on July first, two thousand twenty-five, and end on July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight. So a three-year term. This agreement shall be extended each year for one additional year by the board unless action is taken by the board stating that the contract is not rolling forward and that the contract will continue toward its maturity. Board action to extend or not roll forward must occur by March fifteenth. If the board chooses not to issue a subsequent renewal contract, this provision of the contract is intended to provide written notice of non-renewal to the superintendent as required by O R S three four two dot five thirteen. The length of this contract is a two-hundred-and-sixty-day-per-year contract.
I thought it was three sixty.
Well, she does. That's the problem. Well, we'll, we'll get to that here in a minute. So we, we had a few sticking points during this, but we managed to move through them, so. But the basics are, her base salary is going from one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars a year to one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-six-hundred for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And then annually on July first, beginning in two thousand twenty-six, the superintendent's salary shall increase by the amount equal to the step and cola provided to licensed staff for the time period. And I can tell you that we did raise the question because I, I kind of like the fact personally, and just speaking for me alone, that it's, you know, if the teachers get it, she gets it, but one thing that we brought up to Dawn is that while you're bargaining for you're, you're, you're the one that gets to bargain for the teachers' union, so, you know, why wouldn't you just give them ten and then you'd get ten? I, there, I have zero trepidation about that happening at all. And as you could tell from the budget, I, that's seems to be the limiting factor anyways, so. And honestly, I would love to give the teachers ten percent and Dawn. But, so anyways, I just wanted to let you know that, that, that was brought up. Another change was that currently superintendent can buy back five days of vacation, and basically that means that at the end of every year, actually, that I can't remember what the basically, once a year, I can't remember the exact date. What was that? By June first, she can get paid for five days of her unused vacation, and we moved that to seven days of unused vacation. No other changes until we get to the accessibility and technology allowance. Currently, the allowance is twenty-six hundred dollars annually, and it got moved a hundred dollars to twenty-seven hundred dollars annually. And then the, also the yearly allowance for the personal vehicle use while on district business went from thirty-eight hundred dollars currently to thirty-nine hundred dollars. And then deferred compensation currently is two-point-five percent. And we're, it's, we're proposing five percent of salary annually. The other change that we requested was no later than September. The, the, so this verbiage has always been in here, but it's tweaked a little bit. And I can tell you in years past, there was some confusion on if the contract was automatically extended based on a performance evaluation. It wasn't real clear, so we wanted to make sure it was very clear. So the new verbiage is no later than September first of each year of the contract. The board shall, in consultation with the superintendent, establish general goals and specific objectives for the school year. The goals and objectives shall be established in writing and set forth mutually agreed criteria for the evaluation of the superintendent. An evaluation of the superintendent's performance of our duties will be conducted no later than March fifteenth of each year this contract is in effect. The board shall notify the superintendent in writing no later than March fifteenth of the results of the evaluation and the board's intention to continue terminate or modify this contract. So two separate things. The evaluation's one thing, and then this board will vote. It'll be very clear that we're going to be voting for, the evaluation's not an automatic vote to renew contract. Two separate things. Done. Anything to?
Nope.
So I might not be understanding entirely correctly, but I was wondering on number two, where it said agreement shall be extended each year for one additional year by the board unless action is taken by the board stating the contract is not rolling forward and the contract will continue towards mature. Isn't like in twenty twenty-six, you evaluated on Moorefield. If you're like, oh, you know, we're not going to renew your contract and still going towards twenty twenty-eight, isn't that creating unadditional stress needed? Because it's like, oh, you know, you're passing a little class, you're topping out the time.
I, I'm going to say I can only speak for me, because this basically has happened before, but yeah, it's a three-year contract, and after one year goes by, we sit and talk about it, and we decide to redo the three-year contract, or if we say
Oh, so it's every three years?
No, it's every year.
Every year. It's a rolling contract.
Yeah. So she'll have two years left. Yeah.
So how it's, can I answer? So how it's written is that I will always have a three-year contract. Unless the board decides
Not to.
We're not going to, we're not going to roll, or we're not going to extend this year, and then your contract will end on whatever
The ending date is.
Date the contract is set to.
Or we could say that, you know, we have some concerns in this area, and these are your objectives, and let's visit again the, the following year.
Six months.
Six months or, or whatever. This just sets that timeline. But, no, that's a good question.
And, and Parker, that's a very standard contract or rolling, their rolling contract is very standard for superintendents in the state of Florida.
And that's what we do for our teachers as well, our contract teachers. They have a two-year contract, and then every year we bring them to the board, and basically they get their contract extended by year. So basically, they're always, they always have a two-year contract unless we say no, we're not going to extend.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Great question.
Okay, I move to approve.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I've moved to approve Superintendent Morefield's employment contract as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, please. So back when we started this process with giving an interim superintendent one of the strongly held beliefs of the community is that they wanted to be able to participate. That being said, we assured the community that we would do so. My question surrounding that statement is, have we received any communication from anybody within the school district about Dawn Moorefield? And whether they support or strongly not support?
That's the feedback of the community.
And we did, but there was other people that weren't, that did not participate in it, that may have wanted to bring forth their own voice on it. So I just wanted, that question ran into the record. Second question. H R holds step increases. It's scheduled step increases, and the scheduled step increases sunset at some point in time. And people get COLAs on an annual basis. I don't see anything in here indicating how far her steps go to.
We talked about that, Dawn, too.
Because it's a three-year contract, and we negotiate that.
Yeah. But I think the current is five years. For, for, for admin.
Do you remember how many steps our admin confidential would give, how many years?
Fifteen. Okay.
But at a certain point, yeah, we want to have, we want to have that discussion as far as what we would consider topping out. You know, after you've been with the district for so long, and you've, you've worked there for so many years, at some point, you top out and you don't continue to get steps. So that would certainly be something to be, because this is a three-year contract, then you would follow this for three years, and then you could have that discussion, because everything else besides the step and the cola increase, everything else is going to be the same for three years, so we won't be having a yearly conversation about any other pieces of my contract, if that makes sense.
Okay. But shouldn't it be a part of the contract? The document itself. The steps.
But I don't know if you could extend the steps past the length of the contract.
Currently, steps are two and a half percent.
Three and a half.
Three and a half percent.
It's based on the teacher salaries set, so the difference between step one and step two, and step two and step three is three and a half percent.
What step are you on now?
Well, this would be
The first step.
This would be one?
Right.
Okay, so.
The percentage needs to be within the confines of this contract.
But I didn't put, so the one sixty-five six.
So there is, yeah, this, this contract is cola only, correct? I'm
This year.
This year, sorry.
Starting July one is just a, is just a three and a half percent increase.
The step will begin.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if there's eighteen, this contract
Yeah.
And I think it's tied into our, with the teacher's contract, classified contract, so if we change that it changes automatically, it's written here.
Yeah, but within the, within the teachers or the certified and licensed, those step increases are part of the C B A, which is, that is the contract. And without that information being in this contract, this contract has no, no sense.
No, that's not true. I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to disagree. Because it is noted in whatever the teachers are getting is based on the step and pull-up for the teachers. So on their salary schedule, we know what the step is. We know the percentage of the step for each column. And we will know what your pull-up is. And we will know what your COLA is. So I don't get a step this year. My step and COLA wouldn't start until July of twenty twenty six and it's going to be based on the teachers, whatever the teachers get.
Yeah, this is a contract, this is an independent contract that's separate from.
Yeah, but it's tied to because it says right there, provided to the licensed staff in the same period.
And I had my I can say my attorney, but yeah.
I mean, after we know what the
And you're gonna know.
The licensed staff is, you know, we can attach it to it, but.
When's next?
This year.
This year, yeah. So you'll know after we finish negotiations with the certified group, you'll know what they're going to get for beginning in twenty six.
In twenty six.
So you could certainly attach that salary schedule to.
Yeah, the step schedule.
Because it's gonna be tied to whatever they get.
Yeah, we can we can do that, but we don't know what it's gonna be.
Well, I understand that and and I and I agree with listening and communicating, I agree with that. Right, but we need some additional wording that, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's that.
Just wanted to be dependable.
Yeah, it it says right here, though, Tracy, it says, you know, amount equal to steps and COLA provided to the licensed staff for the same period. It says it right in there. Now, we could attach that to this after we know what theirs is for twenty twenty six. But, you know, it's tied in there by that provided to the licensed staff for the same period. Okay.
Great. Any other discussion on it? Prepared to vote? I will call for both the Tracy row.
Hi.
Fred Cappolani.
Hi.
Fred Sonderberg.
Hi.
Carol Vickery. I am Chair Mitchell Buntzai. That brings us to superintendent evaluation process and goal setting discussion. So we did follow the OSBA evaluation process this year. Did anyone have any concerns with that process? Or do we want to consider other methods for evaluation? Right? We talked about a three sixty in the past. I'm afraid you brought that up a couple times.
Yeah, I I don't like the current and never have. Don't I I think the while we're following isn't it the I think it's COSA. So just the fact that the and correct me if I'm wrong, but COSA is what what's COSA?
It's actually OSBA.
Wasn't it OSBA?
It's COSA and OSBA. They developed a new their new, which is what we use this year. COSA and OSBA developed.
Okay. But so at least partial input is from an organization that represents the exact position that we're evaluating. So I I personally, you know, if the community or the anybody else or a an actual, you know, board organization, I guess. I'm saying this all wrong and I feel like part of this I shouldn't get a vote on because I'm probably not going to participate in the next evaluation. But I I I've never liked it and I think it's very limited in scope and I'd like to see it focused more on the fundamentals of the kids in school, like, you know, graduation rate, actual performance of the school district itself.
You mean performance based?
Performance based, yeah. And I I would also, and the reason I brought up the three sixty evaluation is I don't know what goes on at the school, I have no idea, but there's a bunch of members in the audience today that do. I I would like community feedback and especially staff feedback on how well they think the leader of our school is doing. Because I hardly ever get to talk to them and it's in limited settings when I do. So that's my reasoning for wanting the three sixty evaluation.
Think you still have the ability to do that using the standards that are listed. If you use the the COSA OSBA superintendent evaluation, there is an option for you to be able to you be able to do like a survey or I think you can fit however you want to do that.
I would feel better, just a little more feedback just than I I have a very narrow limit of what happens.
We we had we had a three sixty one year and it it turned out to be a mess just because the people who wrote it and the people who took all the information for it and what we actually got back. We don't even know if it was really true.
Please learn what not to do.
We learn not what, yeah, exactly.
So was it the the evaluation or who was wrong?
It was a process.
Okay, okay.
You know, I didn't, you know, so I I guess with that being said, Fred, I'm kind of leery of it because of the the bad that that happened that time. But I understand there are, in fact, I think I've talked to Dawn about it, there's other three sixties that are done that are that are very efficient, we can learn a lot from. So I'm not totally against it at all. But one thing I would love to do is do another town hall meeting in January because I thought that was one of the best places where you can get people from the community to come in and ask direct questions, like what we did this year. I thought that was very educational and it was very supportive to us as a board and to Dawn as a superintendent.
I would welcome that as well, but I I would like a way for staff to give their opinion anonymously.
Yeah.
And.
No, and and that's why I'm saying I I'm not against the three sixty. But I would love to see town halls become a regular thing.
Okay.
I love the idea of a three sixty and there we use them on all of our providers that work annually for their, you know, whatever their next year or their next contract. But so I don't know how long ago it was that you guys did the three sixty, but I'm willing to bet they've come a long ways.
It was about six, six.
Six years, seven years?
Six years.
About um about nine years ago.
Was it?
It is, yeah. No, it wasn't me. Yeah, yeah. No, it was.
Who was the superintendent?
Seven years. It was Kent.
Kent. So, yeah. Probably seven years ago.
I bet they're much more efficient now and.
Well, I I believe that probably more efficient, it was who ran the last one, that was. Or what do you call the person, you know, not who ran it, but.
Orchestrated.
Orchestrated.
And facilitated the facilitated.
The summary of it.
The summary of it and was able to take out certain identifiers.
Yeah.
It was it was not a pleasant experience, I have to say the least.
Now, I know that OSBA or COSA has their own thing for three sixty two, don't they? I think OSBA does.
I don't think they do anymore.
Or they used to, okay.
Well, isn't, yeah, remember we had that conversation, I can't remember her name.
Krista?
Just I think so.
It was a Krista.
They have something that's similar, but not might be.
But but I I'm not object to look into it. And then we, you know, we can find out some information on it and we can make a decision on it.
I'm not objective on the three sixty either. Three six, a proper three sixty is amazing tool. We just need to get a proper three sixty is what we need. Parent input, staff input. Well, that's that's essential. Questions, questions are difficult to come up with, but they need to be centered, as far as I'm concerned, the goals that we establish for our superintendent.
Yeah.
Nothing outside of that. Because then it becomes cloudy and muddy. It's it's a really valuable tool. But going back to a current evaluation process, I think it's important that we do consider a three sixty in it. We've tried other evaluation tools, at least two others since I've been on the board. And that's a that's twelve years this term that this term ends. And we will always circle back to the OSBA COSA evaluation process. I'd like to hear more about what Fred has to propose, some examples, something before we take a vote tonight on which tool we're going to use.
Are we gonna vote on?
We don't have to vote on those.
Yeah, I I would suggest some more research and and honestly, I think the I think what we've been doing is the easy button, honestly. Something that everybody does.
I don't know that it's easy, Fred, it takes thought, it takes time.
It's easy to administer.
Would it be more reconnecting with Krista to get some more info on the options on the COSA side and then we can make one firm decision?
Hey, yeah, Dawn, have you have you been involved in three, do they use three sixty at Cascade? That you remember?
That superintendent's been there for over a decade.
He's doing.
So long, yeah.
How do you feel about the idea of three sixty?
I'm okay with it as long as you take take the information that you gather. And if you have five people that participate and all five people have a bone to pick with me, I would hope that you wouldn't just take that information and say, oh, well, everybody, you know, doesn't think she's doing a good job. Because a lot of times the people that are going to have issues are those that
Will make sure they fill out.
Probably have issues.
No matter who they have.
You don't often see people come out and and want to express the positivity.
Believe me, I that's how I know right now things are going well because all I'm hearing is cricket. So we we get it.
I think as I was sort of listening in, from what I understand, the like three sixty report would be taking information from the community. My only concern would be is if you take the information from the community and use it as the one all buy off, like, you know, you take survey of a hundred people and fifty of them say Dawn's doing bad, maybe they don't know half of what Dawn had been doing. And that information can be biased and potentially unhelpful to the board and what they want the superintendent, how the superintendent's goals align with that.
Getting public participation is difficult no matter what.
Yeah.
Of course.
Whether it's we're surveying how the district is doing as a whole, you're surveying an individual. It's it is difficult to get public participation.
Yeah.
And we saw that whenever we surveyed our community for our integrated guidance plan.
You know, you get a parent that has a trouble with the child in a specific class, that parent complains about that specific class and they blame the superintendent for it, you know, when it's really not even, I mean, although you are, you know, the chief of command, you know, yeah. And Parker, I agree with you, we as a board have to value, have to put a value on the information that we get, whether it be from a coworker, a teacher or a staff person. And you have to value what, put a value on what a parent says. Because you you're exactly right, they don't they don't work with her.
And staff.
And yeah, and and staff does, you know, and and yeah.
Well, the hard part, the hard part with that statement, yes, and hard part with that state statement is that in a lot of those circumstances, you can't identify, you 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 cannot go and get the information and determine whether that complaint is valid or not. So that's.
If you only get fifteen responses out of a district with, you know, over a hundred staff members and, you know, seven hundred students, how much validity are we going to place on those fifteen responses?
You need to take that into account.
You do, you have to weigh that too.
That that would be my only.
Put a value on that.
I think it should be a two part, maybe a statement that we're building another amphitheater and then what do you think about? We will get public participation.
I think first about the three sixty side and then adjusting. I didn't have any concerns with the existing process, but that's probably because we had the town hall. Right. And I felt really good about getting that feedback from the town hall and the survey that followed. So I do think getting feedback is important. But I don't feel like I was missing that this year with the process that we had. So whether the three sixty.
Will you will you say that again?
I just don't feel like I missed anything.
Okay.
By not doing a three sixty, I feel like the evaluation process we called up this year was solid, we had great feedback, we had great attendance, we had a great survey response outwards. I was a little surprised by some of them because it was a little hard to figure out. But overall, I mean, I felt like we got a good representation of the community after that. So I'm not advocating one way or another, but I do think that we got what we asked for this year. And I hope we get that.
Yeah.
Chair, if it's in your heart.
I agree with you and I think there was good feedback, I'd be fearful of not having that sort of attendance. I I think it was the, you know, new superintendent in town and there's a lot of people interested in what's going on and my my and I agree with you a hundred percent, first of all. And if if we could guarantee we'd have that attendance level, then I'd say let's do it the same way exactly. But I think once things are going well, that you especially something you have to show up in person, I worry about five people showing up.
But then that brings up, you know, what come what responses are we gonna get from them?
Sure.
So if you're worried about not getting the attendance, we should be as equally worried about what side of the response run we're gonna get.
Yeah, sure. Whether we did a three sixty or not.
Whether we did a three sixty or not.
I agree.
I think you could get it either way, or I don't think that the process is this year was bad. They gave us everything we wanted and there wasn't any gaps on mine that I have.
I agree.
I'm one person, that's just my opinion.
I agree because of the town hall.
Right.
So so maybe what we can do is we could schedule a town hall in January, again, like what we did, and have have a three sixty in the back pocket or an idea of the three sixty because if 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 we don't get a lot of feedback or a lot of people participating at the town hall, then maybe we can send out, you know, decide if you want to do the three sixty.
Well, you're cutting down your time at that point, though, if our deadline is.
Oh, that's true, that's true, that's true.
We have a lot of process to meet that deadline.
You're right, you're right.
So I mean, I'm all in favor of a town hall, I am, I think it was great, but I don't think having one in January and then determining if that will make up for the three sixty to get planned.
No, you're right.
Again, I'm one member and I'm not opposed to either.
May I again, I agree with you one hundred percent. I got more out of the town hall than I know that I got out of the three sixty that I was part of years ago. Much easier to digest and and think about. That's that's my preference.
This is a great discussion, but it is seven o'clock and I would like to be home soon, y'all. I have been home once today. Your crochet, I can't believe you. It's awesome. So could we table this and continue this? Okay, let's do that, agreed. Anyone else have a, they, press name? All right, that brings us to integrated. Alright, uh, that brings us to Integrated Guidance Plan Report.
Alright. Me. So you have a copy of a PowerPoint. I'm gonna. Put this up for you. Okay, so um. Tonight I'm gonna be um, sharing with you our um, pieces of our integrated application. There we go. Okay, so the plan um, is due to the Oregon Department of Education on April thirtieth. Um, the plan would include our application. Um, it would also include our budget. And it is also going to include all the materials that we have to submit under the integrated guidance. And so tonight I'm gonna be talking to you about the uh, purpose of the presentation. Giving some background and context, share with you who participated in planning um, the integrated guidance plan. Uh, and inputs, the overview and what happens next. So the purpose for tonight's presentation is to share um, what was prioritized in the plan. Uh, given the range of inputs that we've received, uh, to talk to you about how the plan was developed. Um, to share with you um, uh, to hear any additional feedback on the plan now that it has been developed. I do have to give an opportunity for any public comment tonight. And then finally will be to seek board approval of the plan so that I can get it submitted to ABD. So just a little bit of background around the integrated guidance plan. Um, the integration effort um, was because there were requests from educational leaders and state legislators. We have all of these different, um, we have student investment account, high school success, we have early literacy. Um, all of those things are, were all little separate entities. So the integrated integrated guidance plan came about because. Educational leaders and state legislators said, we want somebody that can come and see everything. Um, this allowed for um, us to combine processes for community engagement. Because all of those things, student investment account, high school success, early literacy, all of those uh, require community. Community engagement, that require a needs assessment, uh, requires planning, budgeting and evaluation. Um, so the integrated guidance plan allows us to do that for nine different programs that were. Uh, the whole purpose of the integrated guidance plan was to reduce burden and redundancies and improve the framework. So that we can measure our progress over time. So this slide shows you the aligned programs and the common goals. Um, integration is possible for each of these initiatives because of what they have in common. So the integrated guidance plan brings them together so that applicants, regions, schools and programs. Uh, can leverage multiple strategies and funding sources so that we can implement implement these plans more convincingly. Um, so that we can have a positive impact on students. Uh, through the integrated application process, the outcomes and strategies for each initiative. Will continue to come together in a single strategic plan and support the common goals. And then the aim is to build those goals into the entire educational system to embed the work at all levels and ensure sustainability. Local student groups and their families uh, must be engaged in planning under the, under the guidance. And uh, we have to demonstrate through evidence and artifacts how those engagement strategies and activities impacted our outcomes. Our priorities, our strategies and our activities. So just a brief summary of the diagram that you were just looking at. Um, so the different programs that are part of the integrated guidance would be our continuous improvement planning. Um, Everyday Matters, um, that's embedded across six other programs. Um, focused attention on student engagement, culture, climate, safety and culturally sustaining pedagogy. Career connected learning, and this has to do with our career awareness, exploration, preparation and training. High School Success, uh, these are the systems that we have in place to help us improve graduation rates and college and career readiness. Uh, we have our student investment account and that is to meet students' mental health, behavioral needs, increase academic achievement. And early indicator and intervention system, and that is the development of a data collection and analysis system. In which our educators collaborate collaborate to identify supports for students. So how is it that we're meeting the needs of our kids um, that need various supports in the areas of mental health. Social emotional learning, early literacy, all of those pieces.
Hey, Don, what is pedagogy?
Pedagogy is how you teach students. Um, we also have um, early literacy successful district grants that are included in the integrated guidance. Um, these are grand school districts in order to help us increase early literacy. Um, in children from birth to third, birth to third grade. Um, reduce literacy academic disparities, pursue groups that have historically experienced academic disparities. Increasing support to parents and guardians around literacy, increased access to early literacy. We have our CTE programs that are also part of the integrated guidance. Um, and that's where we're wanting to improve access and participation in those programs that prepare learners. Um, for high wage, high skill and degrees. And then we have federal school improvement. And this would be um, the program where we have to address academic disparities for named focal student groups and subject areas at school. Um, identified as comprehensive support and improvement CSI schools and targeted support and improvement, which are TSI schools. We have two, our high school and our middle school are both identified um, as TSI schools. So our planning team members, um. Where myself, our creative woman, our director of special services. Laura Pierce-Cunnington, our high school principal, Scott Jancy, our middle school principal, and Kimberly Rose, our elementary school principal. So this next slide just outlines for you the required planning processes um, that we have to go through. The integrated application process requires us to follow these steps. In order to create a quality plan that's matched to our local need. Um, first on the list, I'll just go through these very briefly, so I'm gonna talk about um, several of them. Um, use of an equity lens, and if you wanna pull up um, the uh, decision-making tool. Just so that they can see what we used. So instead of calling it an equity lens, we're calling it a decision-making tool. Um, and it really was based off of the tool that the high school uses. As they're doing their work, they have a a ninth grade on track implementation team and um, various other staff leadership teams. So it boils down to, Jefferson School District, we believe that every voice deserves to be heard. Each student should be seen, valued and treated with dignity. And we will continually refine our practices to provide access and support for all of our students. And then these are just some questions that we ask um. As we're making decisions, what are we trying to accomplish with the process of decision and how will we know if we've accomplished our goal? Does it align with our we believe statements, which were the two statements up in the top? Who will be affected? Um, how will different groups or individuals be affected positively or negatively, so looking at our student body as a whole? How will we ensure communication to those affected takes place in an inclusive manner? And does the decision ignore, increase or decrease access and support for all students? So um. We also base it off of our vision of the school district that together we inspire, empower and prepare all students to succeed. So making sure that we're not leaving out any of our students. Um, also involved in the or required in the planning process would be community engagement. What we can talk about, appropriate needs assessments, what is the potential impact on our focal students. Development of a four-year plan with clear outcome strategies and activities. Um, the exist, looking at our existing plan, um, we currently have an integrated guidance plan that takes us through the end of this school year. So reviewing that plan and and what are we doing to revise it? Um, we don't have district equity committees. Um, we're not required to have a district equity committee until the beginning of the following, until the beginning of this coming school year. Um, recommendations from the quality education model, recommendations from statewide student success act plans. And reviewing and using regional CTE consortium inputs, those are all things that we have to take into consideration. Um, as we were planning our integrated guidance plan for the twenty-five, twenty-seven by union. Any questions so far? Any comments so far? Alright. Okay, so just to share with you, um, you know, one of the requirements that I stated was that we had to have community engagement. So I wanted to share with you um, our community engagement highlights. So in an effort to improve overall community engagement, Jefferson School District has implemented the use of parent square. So that communication is improved with all families and parents are able to communicate back and forth to school in their preferred language. We also started a Latinx parent group, which meets on a regular basis. The high school has grade level, family, student meetings on a regular basis, and they have student leadership group that meets on a regular basis. The school sent out monthly newsletters to their families. This year, the middle school and the high school had a combined music program in an effort to get more parents or community members to attend. Our barriers continue to be getting families to attend meeting and meetings and programs. As well as difficulty in hiring interpreters on a consistent basis. The following strategies were used to actively engage our community in an effort to gather information needed to write our plan. So for our focal students and families, we did the youth truth survey. We had a district developed parent survey. We did the town hall meeting with the superintendent. Latinx meetings and high school student leadership meetings. As far as engaging with staff, we did the youth truth survey, we had a district developed staff survey. We have the town hall meeting with the superintendent and then the schools individually have um, their own leadership meetings. So we had, I had gone over um, in a previous meeting, some of our highlights from recent needs assessments. Um, we have to share that again this evening. Um, so based on the data that we do from our different needs assessments. We know that the district needs to continue to provide the after-school clubs, sports and activities that we currently have. And that we need to incorporate more anti-bullying and social emotional lessons in the classroom. Additionally, school to home communication and increasing school support regarding student attendance was identified as a priority. A major strength that our high school continues to be in the area of college and career readiness. And that Jefferson School District is giving students the tools and resources they need in order to determine their path, their path post-high school. Our partnership with the Willamette Career Academy continues to grow with more and more students being interested in the CTE programs they offer. And for our middle school, it was noted that an area of strength is the relationships and belonging, but that student engagement act. And academic challenge was low rated lower than we would like. And finally, at our elementary school, an identified area of strength was that students felt that they were learning in school. What they were learning in school was helpful to them in their life. However, student behavior and a lack of respect for others was identified as an area of weakness. So the things that we looked at was um, we reviewed our strategies from our current plan. So what is it that we're currently doing in our current plan? We looked at our at a glance and district profiles and accountability details from ODE, and I shared those with the board at a November board meeting. We looked at our regular attendance, attenders data, we looked at our on-track to graduate data, our on-time graduation. Our five-year completed data, our academic su- success in math and reading. Our student drop data from Acadiance and IXL, student interest and participation in our CTE programs. Um, results from the youth truth and district developed surveys. Based on that information, um, these priorities emerge. So our community engagement efforts are need supplement process and examination of our data. This is what we found. First was an affirmation of our current educational opportunities. A key takeaway was the desire for the continuation of our current educational programs. This indicates that the core of what we are providing is valued by our families and staff. There's an urgent need for enhanced anti-bullying and social emotional learning. A significant majority of respondents emphasized the critical need to strengthen our anti-bullying initiatives. And integrate more robust social emotional learning supports across all grade levels. This clearly signals a priority area for our attention and resources. There's a strong desire for in-person interaction with staff. There was overwhelming support for the return or implementation of back-to-school slash open house nights. Parents also expressed a strong desire for opportunities to meet teachers, administrators and other school staff in person to build relationships and foster better communication. There was a request for parent education on attendance. A notable finding was the desire for the district to provide parent education on effective strategies to encourage student attendance. This indicates the need for support and resources for families in this area. The feedback that we received um, has directly informed our planning process by providing the district with the recognition from the community. That they are satisfied with our current educational offerings. As a direct result, we will continue to prioritize and invest in these core programs, which include a focus on. SBL, which is social emotional learning, CTE, career tech education and improving student attendance. Any questions or comments? So with all the information that we gathered and looking at what our priorities are. Um, we needed to come up with what are our outcomes going to be for twenty-five through twenty-seven integrated guidance. So we needed to have, uh, which is new this year, we needed to have an outcome for early literacy. And our outcome is to increase K five reading scores. We also have um, three additional outcomes. That are based on. The information that we gathered from our needs assessment as well as for reviewing data and by looking at our current integrated guidance plan. Um, we really didn't change um, outcome A from our current plan to this plan. We worded it a little bit, but basically um, our outcome is to increase the sense of belonging and the social emotional wellness of students. Outcome B is a new outcome for us. Um, and that is because we have our two schools that are identified as the targeted um, schools. Um, and that is to close academic achievement rap, gaps for our focal groups. And then outcome C is to increase the four-year graduation and five-year completed rates. So all of these outcomes reflect the priority work that we are setting forward in our plan. And those would be considered our long-term goals for outcomes for our plan. Based on those outcomes, then we have to develop key strategies to help us achieve our intended outcomes. So under our early literacy um, outcome of increasing our K five reading scores. We have two strategies, and the first is to build culturally responsive early literacy programs and practices. And the second is to implement a strong MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support to include tiers one through three in literacy. And what that means is that how are we, what are the supports and interventions that we're putting in place for our students? Um, that are needing additional support in order to, in order for them to be successful in literacy. That's what MTSS is. Under um, outcome A, um, the increase the sense of belonging and social emotional wellness of students. We have three strategies that we're gonna focus on. And that is, we're gonna continue to provide the support to assist students who exhibit social and emotional dysregulation. We're gonna continue to provide a high school life skills classroom. And we're gonna continue to offer additional electives, electives and after-school clubs for students. Outcome B. Is to close the achievement, academic achievement gap for our focal groups. And our strategy is to implement strong multi-tiered systems of su- support to include tiers one through three for academics. Behavior, SEL and intent. to include tiers one through three for academics, behavior, SEL, and attendance. We're doing some of these things already. So some of them won't be new implementation. For example, we have a ninth grade on track team that's been working all year long and we want to continue to have that team function so that our ninth graders continue to receive the support they need so that we can help them work toward graduating on time. So that will be, that will fall under that piece. We also want to be able to implement attendance teams at each of the schools. We want to be able to implement some social emotional learning tools and interventions for our students and additional interventions around academics. Outcome C is our, the increase four-year graduation and five-year completed rate. And we have implement the LINE GOT team. So we already have one going in the high school. We want to be able to continue that, but we were, we were doing that team under a different financial umbrella. And so we're going to move it into our high school, high school success. We want to continue to provide an alternative education program and we want to continue to maintain our CTE programs and dual credit offerings to provide a well-rounded education. So those things that I just listed are the specific projects and approaches that we, that we want to use to help us achieve our outcomes.
John, can you explain to, to our listeners what nine GOT means?
Ninth grade on track. So making sure that our students who are ninth graders, that number one, they're attending school and number two, that they are earning enough credits in their ninth grade year so that they can graduate within four years. And so that team gets together and they look at their ninth graders and how they are performing, what students need interventions and how are we going to help the student with attendance or how are we going to help the student who may be failing in class? What are we doing to help that student be more successful? I think Zach is still in here. Is there anything else?
Thank you for facilitating, Laura. No, no, and a lot of the work that we do on a really daily basis is constantly looking over students' grades mixed with attendance, looking for some of these key performance indicators we come up with to identify students with a little bit of extra specific intentional work. We can help intervene and keep them from sliding off and maybe hopefully give them some of the skills to prevent them from being in that same place later.
Thank you. It makes me feel sorry, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry, I was going to say, Mason, if you don't mind speaking a little more, could you give an example or something like how that works? Because I knew some friends that were failing classes and those were their teachers. And it's not the teacher's fault at all. The teachers have like fifty kids to look over, but they weren't necessarily taken out or singled in any way and said, hey, how can I help you with this F who shouldn't be failing this class?
So this year, some of what we've done is identifying students who are, you know, maybe failing one or two classes and have a high enough attendance or have maybe something that we know from some of the interviews that we've done with them or our, our office staff or SAT team, our counselor have done interviews and maybe we know we can make some headways on some of the things that are affecting their attendance. But then we talk about maybe between our group because it's ninth grade core teachers, math, science, social studies in LA. What are some strategies that we're using by the effective year? We do what's called a kid talk protocol where there's an interview with some of these students that we've identified to talk about how things are going, to talk about what are some of the positives, what they like about school and try to get a little bit deeper into this rather than just being like, oh, well, they've got three Fs and have a bunch of missing assignments. That's a really superficial look where this dives a whole lot deeper into, well, are you struggling with, you're struggling with being organized and coming fast with things? So what kind of plan can we put together where a teacher that they feel comfortable, comfortable interacting with can kind of check in on a regular basis and help put that together in the first place? And then maybe get them to sustain it eventually on their own. It's the goal. But, and then that could be the thing that is preventing them from doing better in classes. That help?
It's all right.
Parker, it's seven twenty, so if you could keep the questions to a minimum. You ask as many questions as you would like.
Thank you, Zach. I appreciate that. Put you on the spot. Any questions about our key strategies?
Yes.
Yeah.
So this is brought forth, correct me if I'm wrong, changes in legislative decisions through professional input from educators.
Are you on a specific page?
No.
No.
No. I mean, this all looks great to me, you know? And it probably looks great to them too. Because they created it. The one thing that's been created in the state of Oregon that has created a significant problem for students and their ability to learn is student behavior. How are we going to get that taken care of at our district so that the students that are here to learn are going to be able to learn without being afraid to come to school?
Sometimes you see students that are misbehaving in school because they're, they're trying to communicate something to you. It could be that they are, they're lacking in some, some type of skill. And it's up to us as educators to figure out and what are we lacking in and what are we going to do to intervene to help teach them the skills that they need in order to help them behave or to communicate what their behavioral, what they're trying to communicate to us. If we've got these things in place, we've got multi-tiered systems of support in place for academics, for attendance, for social emotional learning. We're working with our students to determine where are their gaps in learning, what kinds of interventions do we need to provide to get them back on track? I'm hoping that that helps the burning majors. I also strongly believe that we need some training for our staff in an area of cultural problem solving. I'm just going to throw it out there. And it is an effective technique or effective way to communicate with our students if they're having difficulty communicating with us. I think we have, we just need some training, staff needs to train to deal with some of the behaviors. But I also think that some of the programs that we're trying to put in place, some of the things that we're trying to do in the schools, providing our students with supports that they need, that we can get a handle on and figure. There's some things that we can't change. Like we can't change the fact that, you know, we have students that you just can't put your hands on kids. And I'm not saying focal punishment type, but I'm saying you can't even drive a kid by the yard if they're trying to run away from you. We, we just can't do that anymore. We used to be able to do that. You can't do that anymore. So you have to come up with what are the strategies that you're going to put in place to keep that child from eloping or running out of the classroom? And so we are working on that specifically with our special education staff in training in that area. And then I think if we can get some additional training staff, that will help too.
I, I wished it was that easy.
I know, I know. It all comes into here.
Yeah. This, like I said, this is, this is great, you know? But I am apprehensive to the efforts that are going to be put into this. If we don't engage student behavior as a priority, how successful is this going to be? I'll have to say.
Well, I, I, you know, I think, you know, legislatures require us to do this, but then they pass laws that make it hard for us to teach children the way that we should. You know, and that, that's really sad. You know, they tell you to do something, but then they tie your hands with other things and it seems like it's off balance on how it should be and how, you know, these children want to learn.
Yes.
You know, most of them want to learn. They, they all want to.
Yes.
And, but they're putting all, they're tying our hands on how we can teach them.
I don't know that, that you guys, you guys probably haven't, I mean, you've seen it in the budget, but as far as me handing you a budget that says, you know, early literacy money, high school success, it's about 1.2 million dollars that the district gets so that we can, we can provide people to do the things that we're planning on doing so that we can continue to send our high school students to the Latinx Academy so that they can enroll in those CTE programs so that we can pay stipends to our teachers that are giving up their prep time to do the ninth grade on, on track meetings. All of those things come from this money that we get for our integrated guidance.
Well, I have no, no absolute faith in you, our administrators, that put in some serious time in this, developing it, you know, putting it on paper, trying to formulate a plan, but I'm, I'm, I'm hoping.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping.
Me too. Me too.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Okay, so the next thing, longitudinal performance growth targets called LPGTs. Once we submit our plan to ODE, then ODE will be working with the school district to help us co-develop longitudinal performance growth targets based on data available or analysis. So they'll be looking at third grade reading proficiency rates measured by our state assessment. They'll be looking at our ninth grade on track rates. They'll be looking at our regular attendance rates, our four-year or on-time graduation rates and our five-year completion rate. So they'll be helping us establish some LPGTs after that. And we're required to have those growth targets and that's required in the student investment account. All right, so what happens next? So if you look at the little squiggly path in your handout, so we are at the very beginning where it says public review and board approval. So that's where we are. Each application will undergo a thorough evaluation process for approval, after which they're going to call our integrating plan. The timing is outlined on the slide that you have in front of you. There are a number of variables that can shift that timeline including when we submit the application and if they require us to do any type of follow-up, they may ask us, I need you to go back and revise this question or we need more information in this area. So that could impact the timeline. So we submit to ODE, they intake, ODE will plan and do a budget review, so they review both of those. The next is the QALP. It's the Quality Assurance and Learning Model. ODE may take a random sampling of twenty-five to thirty applications. They'll have a separate panel to affirm or challenge the assessment of the plan made by ODE staff which may cause an additional review process for the application. We'll go through the co-development of our longitudinal performance growth targets or local optional metrics. Once that is done, then they'll send out grant agreements and then we will return to the board and present to you the public review, including our LPGTs and you'll have to approval again.
So how, how, time period, a year?
No, no, it'll be sooner than that. It'll be.
By next fall?
By the fall. Because it's for the twenty-five, twenty-seven by union. So it's, you know, everything is scheduled to start when the next school year starts.
And there are grant dollars attached to this?
Yeah.
What does it mean financially for us? Like what if the board said no?
We would not get the 1.2, 1.3 million dollars from the state.
Don't say no.
You can't tell me how to vote first.
Don't say no.
So we do, we do have to give public the opportunity to comment. Do we have any comments from anybody here this evening or there's anybody online? Do you have any, any comments or even any questions, any comments or questions from the board?
I have a thought, but, I mean, unless all five of us went down to the state capitol and decided to visit with, with our direct representatives, they didn't put a spot in here for any board comments where we can put input into what we think they should be looking at as well. I don't know if that's something that can be done, but.
You mean what the state should be looking at?
Yeah, what the state should be looking at.
I think it could be probably separate from, from board approval. But, you know, I, I guess I would be interested to hear what the comments would be.
That, that's going to require a little more thought process.
Okay. But nothing as far as what we, what we provided to you in the plan?
No, it, it, by and large, it's a lot of information. So it's kind of vague. You know, there's a lot of acronyms thrown in there. There's no charting, you know, it's vague. So I.
Well, it's vague. Test is boring.
Yeah.
But the people.
Understood. Understood, but we're the ones that are giving the yes or the no.
Yeah, but we, we, we're the ones that trust in.
Yeah.
Our admin.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. We also trust in our own intuition as well, so.
I don't think I went to enough school.
So basically, I mean, the gist of the plan, Tracy, is that we had to come up with what are our goals and those are the outcomes that I shared with you and what are the strategies or activities that we put in place in order to help us meet those goals? Our plan is really not a whole lot different than what we're, than what we presented for the twenty-three, twenty-five by union. Still doing those same things, just kind of tweak things a little bit more. Some of our outcomes in our previous integrated plan were, were very specific and I think tied our hands as far as what we could, what kinds of strategies we could implement, implement. So tried to write those outcomes so that they were a little bit more general so that whenever we put our strategies in, our strategies could be a little bit more specific about how we were going to meet that goal. What, what people were we going to hire, what programs were we going to put into place? You won't see us doing anything less than what we're currently doing. I'm hoping that you'll see us doing more with the plan that we're, that we're submitting.
I think it's a living document. I think you guys are going to be able to have the ability to be able to, to change, to, to shift, you know, to go, oh, this ain't working. I need more of that.
Right.
I, 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 I totally believe that that's what this article is telling this board.
Yes. And my goal is, because I know that our strategic plan ends at the end of this year, my goal is to kind of intertwine our strategic plan with what we're doing here so that we're not doing two separate plans, that it all works together. I mean, our goal is to graduate a kid, right?
Yep.
We want to, and, and whether they go on to, you know, the, the high-paying, high-demand jobs or they're going to the two-year college or four-year college or they're going straight into the workforce. That's what our job is, is to prepare students for whatever, whatever their plans are when they make decisions in this room. And so we believe that by implementing the outcome or the strategies that we've talked about, that we can help our students meet that goal. That we've talked about, um that we can help our students meet that goal.
Well, Dawn, you know, one thing I love and appreciate about you is, uh, you know, we've done this before. And I can't ever remember. From, you know, Fred and and Tracy's been on here, two years ago, we did this. And I don't remember any of it being explained like this. So, you you know, you're bringing. Yeah, so I appreciate that.
Well, and then the big piece, I mean, with the integrated guidance, it's it's bringing all of those different things that we're working on. Early literacy, high school success, CTE. Um, our our continuous improvement plan, how are we spending our Title One money, our Title Two money, all of those things. Are kind of grouped under this umbrella of integrated guidance. So our our ask for this evening um is that we're asking the. Did it quit on me? We're asking that the Jefferson fourteen J um Board of Directors approve the integrated integrated guidance plan.
Well, I'm moved to accept the integrated guidance plan as presented.
I'll call for vote, Tracy Rowe.
Hi.
Jerry Kamalani.
Hi.
Fred Sondermeyer.
Hi.
Carol Vickery, uh Chair Mitchell Bonsai.
Thanks to you, Dawn, and all your staff that helped uh throw all this information together. Cause like as Fred stated, I can't even imagine the hours that went into this to do that.
Several evenings. Um, and it it's not a job that a person can do by themselves, so um. In order for it to be a truly living, working document for the district. Um, our administrators needed to be involved in that process. I do believe that it was the first time that they had truly been involved in the process.
Thank you, all of you. Thank you very much.
Next, for the agenda, our last item for new businesses, career pathways out of state field trip.
Yes, so you have a request for a field trip. Um, it is for um our career pathways, senior trip. Um, and they are going through the University of Washington. And because it is an out-of-state trip, even though it is just to the great state of Washington, it does require board approval.
Same university as last year, right? Is that same one? Yeah.
What what's the note um say on the right-hand side there? Let's see, the final number five.
In order to determine how many chaperones.
Is this overnight?
No. Six AM. It's a long day, though, really long day. Eighteen, almost eighteen hours.
Yep, the University of Washington, Pecos Street, Pike Place Market, and Museum of Pop Culture.
This sounds like a great.
Part of the adventure with doing this is going to a big college in a really big city. And so the plan is to go to the University of Washington, do a walk-in tour, see their campus, see what they do. It's a gorgeous campus. And then to take up transportation down. But I mean, that's another part of the adventure, like a lot of these, a lot of our kids, how many of them have gone on public transportation in a large city like that and tried to find?
Are you driving?
Where to? I'm driving, so. So it's a cool bed, now I'm gonna take us up to Seattle.
I'll be praying for you.
Yeah, and every day, right?
That's a tough deal.
Well, I'm excited to you guys, and I move to approve the career pathways out of state field trip to Washington. Moving seconded, any further discussion? So I'm gonna go to the pop culture. Alright, I'll call for vote, Tracy Rowe.
Hi.
Terry Kamalani.
Right.
Fred Sondermeyer.
Hi.
Carol Vickery. And Chair Mitchell Bonsai. Back to old business, so policy committee meetings. Um, so in reading the minutes, I think, Dawn, you were gonna just follow up on this, did you find anything?
I did, I feel like this was a dead horse, uh he beat it to death. So, so we've talked about the fact that by doing policy committee meetings the way that we're currently doing them, that they've been becoming meetings. And in in having conversations, um I did talk to Neil Kornful. And they said, the only way to to really avoid having those B public meetings. Doesn't matter if there's one board member or two board members, I know that was a question. Yes, yes, that was a question that you had asked, it could make a difference. The difference is if that committee, and by having board members serve on it. Is making recommendations to the board, then it automatically becomes a public.
Right.
Meeting. The the only way to not do that is if, I mean, we can still have a policy committee. It could still involve board members, but instead of the committee being the one to make the recommendation to the board. But that committee is making recommendations to me, and then I am, as a superintendent, making the recommendations to you as board.
That's what I used to do.
Here's, I say you passed the buck, huh?
Which is, right, it's like, this is not.
I like it.
This is not a policy committee that's making the recommendations. But that also means that we could sit in the policy committee and the committee could make a recommendation to me. And I could say, well, I don't wanna do that recommendation, and here's the policy that I'm gonna recommend to board. But then that means as a board, you guys would.
Not vote on.
Pull it and and wanna discuss it and then make those changes. So um the other thing that was brought up, and I don't have the history behind this. Um, Patty doesn't know, um Jen doesn't know, is did the board create the policy committee? Did the board vote to do a policy committee?
Yes.
So the only, then what, then what you would need to do, and this came from Spencer Lewis at OSBA. He said, this really depends on how the current practice was established. If the board created the policy committee, then it makes sense for the board to end the policy committee. It may be a hassle to go back and find any documentation on the creation of the committee. So the simplest thing might be to have the board adopt a motion or resolution ending the policy committee. And giving policy recommendation responsibilities to the superintendent. And then as a superintendent, I would say, I need a policy committee. And I want board members to serve on that ho- on that policy committee. And my integrators to serve on the policy committee.
Yeah, we might as well just stick with what we got.
Yeah.
And and do the meetings, because it it these, the going through the policies, sitting here. On the second Monday of every month is gonna consume.
No, you'd still need it.
You would still do it, you would still have a policy.
She's recommending them to us.
But you're recommending them to her.
I I listened to the part where the policy committee recommended to her.
That's you and and.
Carol, administrator.
No.
No. Okay, well, I misunderstood.
No, so, so the policy committee.
See ya, Parker.
Would be a superintendent committee and not a board advisory committee. Committee, we would meet, just like we have been with board members and administrators, going through the policies. And then I would submit those recommendations to the board as the superintendent.
So all we have to do is make a motion to, how did Spencer say it?
To end, end the current policy committee.
Or we could just film them and make them pop up, right?
But then you have minutes and you have to approve the minutes.
Then you have to tape.
I mean.
Well, I like that idea, dissolving the policy committee.
Sure.
I have a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we dissolve the uh policy committee.
That's a good idea, I'll second that.
It's just information.
No, no, we gotta, we gotta vote on this, if she wants to know, it's a discussion, I'm dissolving.
To dissolve it, we have to.
We have to make the motion.
Yep, so it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Cause then it becomes a superintendent committee.
Yeah.
Instead of a board committee. And it just isn't a public committee then.
Hearing no comment, we will call for a vote, Tracy Rowe.
I will give it a try.
Sorry to comply.
Say yes. Yes, hi, hi. Oh, thank God.
We're done with that now, right?
Yeah, right, we're done.
The dead horse is dead.
Well, let's pronounce the next one, this is the last night for this dead horse. Did everyone get their O G E C statement of economic interest form done?
Yes.
You wanna know publicly?
Deadline.
Publicly?
Yes.
Yes.
I did mind the day that it was required.
Me too.
Fred?
I did do it, yeah.
Great, we're not getting fined, thank you so much.
Well, if not we, it's uh individually.
It's none of us, it's just. Yes, we're getting fined, that's what I cared about. Thank you. Alright, do we have any further comments? No, do we have any board comments?
No.
Fred? Do you have any board comments? Go down the line.
You're aggressive, right?
It's almost my bedtime, it's eight o'clock.
I got a lot to say. Yeah. So, no, actually, um uh it's a very good thing for me, my uh son and grandson and my favorite child. My daughter-in-law and uh soon-to-be grandbaby are moving back down here. And I told them if they could find a place with two residences, that I would sell my place and provide that money as down payment. And they found a place in the Perry Dale School District, not in this one, so um I've sold my house. And uh I'm, so I'm not a renter or homeowner, I don't know what that makes me right now. But I still have a place to sleep and everything, so I won't be uh running for school board again. Um, but I, so I just sitting here reading, um the district gave me this little, uh, did you get one of those? Yeah, remember that? And it just says, uh, may you be proud of the work you do, the person you are and the difference you make. And I think there's a huge difference in this um in this district from four years ago when I started and all the reasons that I. Um, got, uh ran for the school board are are now gone and fixed, and I think the district's in a much better place. So I am really proud. Um, I don't know if I'll make next month's board meeting or not. It's, I have to be a resident of the district and I don't know uh if I will be or not, so. Um, but the person that is running for my position is in the room, his name is Kevin Smith. And I, he works for um uh somebody that our companies work closely together, so. And I know his boss and I vetted him and ask his boss about him, sounds like a great guy, I don't know him that well, so. Yeah, sure, sure, yeah, so anyways, that's my announcement. And I I would hope that if he wants to say anything, the board chair would. Give him that opportunity, and that's all I have to say.
Uh, I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to to take on this community and help out our kid. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
So does anybody else have any comments? Do you get to decide that too?
No, I'm just going down the line.
Uh, you know, I I'm just happy, again, um the, to get that contract done with Dawn. Just cause I'm really pleased with the job that you do and uh. Like Fred and I uh both agreed that if we had more money, we'd give you more money and the teachers. And everybody that uh does work in this district, because it's a big job. And then I I'm, you know, just going over that um. Integrated guidance plan, I ju- just saw the work that you guys do, that our staff does. And I'm just always amazed on their dedication and and uh, you know, their dedication to graduate children, to teach children. And it just, it just makes me happy to be part of this district.
I think the only thing that I had was just, we had one person um apply for for student rep, hey. Um, personally, she's a sophomore, gonna be a junior, so we have to keep looking. But I wanted to say, I hope you passed along, and we are so glad that she applied. And I hope she applies again, because her application was sensational, we have spare students here. I told her we keep it on file and we are looking for someone for next year. Great, we, uh Parker's at the bar pretty high. I think we've all seen that tonight, if not in the past, so. Uh, but yeah, thank you for encouraging her to apply again, I was pulled away. Alright, any notes? Okay, with that, we're gonna adjourn at seven fifty-six.
Thanks for not gaveling on me.
You started with the dabby.
Always pity from the poli- policy. What's that?